Who is that under that mask?
I know.
Hi, Rhonda.
Thanks, sir.
I got, wound up getting a bunch of them because it keeps getting cut off. I'm supposed to soon start driving to the, twice a week to work with students out there.
Right.
And if I can't, maybe I actually want to change masks between the students.
Yeah, well, that's good. I, I have five. I, I work a different one every day and I wash them up all the weekend.
Yeah. I found these ones online. Much, they're more comfortable because it got a bigger pocket.
I actually ordered, um, some face shields.
Yep.
That are supposed to be here hopefully this weekend they get here. And I'm gonna test them out and we'll see how they feel with the headband and stuff. And if they're good, I'm gonna give a couple to the obvious ladies to wear. Stuff to just kind of help. More protection.
This one's even got extra pads right next to the nose, so it kind of blocks that space.
I would just like to have a face shield so that people can see when you're smiling and talking to them instead of guessing what your facial expression looks like.
Well, man, that's very nice. Felt along with Gordon Whitefoot at full volume, but no one could tell I was singing.
Angelina, did you want me to do something?
Oh, no, I just wanted to let everybody know that we're, we're live.
What'd you call it? I'm gonna come on the radio at the right time.
I got this from President Bush.
Yeah, it should be all.
Well, we saw him hurting about, you know, that nation.
Words.
Absolutely.
So that time is recording the, the thing I want.
Yeah, we got two radio stations here that seem to operate regardless of any genre of music. So they'll, you'll get Gordon Whitefoot and the next one will be AC/DC, then you might get Adam Murray.
Yeah, or Willie Nelson. I heard Willie Nelson come on one of them the other day. Right after, I don't know if it's like Kid Rock or something was on there, then Willie Nelson was the next one.
Yeah, the one out of the, the, it's KOHN off the nation. Does that allow them to throw in, um, traditionally American music as well in the country? Did you find your face in that?
Actually, I, I brought, I bought a travel trailer put down here and I'm ready long term from Shadow Ridge until I find the house eventually. Amy made a spot for me at Shadow Ridge, so I can set it back there.
There still a good number of people there?
Oh, it's, yeah.
I think I have a lot of people from the wall.
From the wall and stuff, and then there's type people. All the snowbirds have prepaid for the snow season.
Okay.
So she's just, she said that she would only keep eight wall people on her October instead of nine, so she gave them all of those pieces. She was very good with them.
I call as we need to order. Um, Mr. Jensen says agree to be clerk. So if you would do the roll call, please.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Mr. Hopkins here. Ms. Robertson?
I'm here.
Ms. Treel?
Willie.
Harvey.
Okay. Dr. Dooley?
Here.
Mr. Edlin?
Here.
Ms. Burns?
Here.
All right, um, may I have a motion that we adopt the agenda?
So, move.
And I'll second it.
Okay, um. Keep up my job here. Ms. Duncan?
Um, aye.
Mr. Hopkins, aye. Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
And it passes three to one.
All right, then we're ready to start the business meeting. The two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one budget hearing.
May I, I'm gonna put the, the budget on.
Is it a cutoff, Ms. Burns?
Oh, no, I was gonna try to put the actual thing on here. You should, oh, I did.
Did you cameras that's probably from last four minutes?
Yeah, she wanted me to put it on.
Okay.
Are we, are you ready, Angelina?
Well, they have their copy, but I'm trying to put it on.
And, and that's perfect. Okay. Now, now, the president, members of the board, Dr. Dooley, Mr. Edlin, thank you so much for allowing this time. The purpose is to have a public hearing where the public, and of course you, can ask questions about the budget that we will ask you to adopt later tonight. As I told you at our last meeting, the fiscal year two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one budget has been prepared in accordance with all the instructions provided by the Arizona Auditor General of the Department of Education. And here are the changes, I believe changes are the major changes for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. The base support level, which is a per student amount, has been increased from four thousand two hundred and two thirty-one to four thousand three hundred fifty-nine point five-five. That includes, that's a total of, um, hundred fifty-seven point two-four per ATM or per student. And it includes two components, the inflation factor, which is required to be, um, um, funded each year, plus the last piece of the red for red funding, the twenty by twenty, uh, promised by the governor as a result of the teacher. They can't, uh, strike or walk out, the, the walkouts several years ago, to give teachers raises. Now, those monies are not mandated to be used. Can you guys hear my dog?
Yeah. Wait, wait, hold on.
He, she wants to be here, there. Sorry. Um, we're not mandated to use those money for teacher raises, those monies nor were they, um, sufficient to pay for the total cost of the teacher raises. However, we all know that because our teachers left classes, and it was after the, at almost the end of the legislative session two years ago, that if there hadn't been that action and districts wouldn't have to cancel schools, then certainly there would be no twenty twenty, there would be no increase in funding. Um, and the transportation, uh, funding also increased by the, the inflation factor, which is a bit, which is about four cents per mile. For us in, uh, my, my preliminary estimate was that we will have approximately almost a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars worth of new monies for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. However, as we know, we are, we are funded based on current year funding. So as we're looking at our school year twenty twenty-one, there's more and more questions about what school looks like, what our enrollment is gonna look like. Um, as, as Dr. Dooley and Mr. Edlin will go into detail later tonight, um, there are options they can take and reports they can file or they may, if for some reason our ATM declined by more than two percent, we, we can take basically an insurance policy and, and follow some of the processes to decline no further than two percent as far as our lending. So the real question is then how the budget has been prepared right now? The real question is gonna be as we move through the year, what school looks like, what enrollment looks like, because enrollment will be funded, funded out of our budget. And then, of course, even more importantly, what does quality instruction for our students look like? Can I answer any questions? It's enough to give you a headache.
Uh, Leanne, this.
The month, our, so, yes, doctor.
Uh, we used to say, I don't know whether this is still true or not, that the budget that we presented for the proposed section in June does, cannot change for the adopted budget in July. Is that still accurate?
It can change, it can be reduced, it cannot be increased.
Okay, thank you.
I have made no changes because I don't have any better data today than I did early June when I prepared this budget.
I think people, like the board and one audience member, uh, hi, Rhonda.
I'm sorry.
Uh, it's important to know that we have, if we have, if we see a major financial shift, which thank goodness we think, we've eliminated two percent. If we see a financial shift, uh, we can, we can handle that obviously by, uh, budget adjustments in December and mandatory in May. So, uh, that's something we have to use to deal with this. Because we're in a state of flux, so to speak.
I, I am always a big proponent of, uh, revising the budget as we go and as we have better information. It keeps our budget as up to date as possible and helps us live within our means better. I will tell it to you that if I look at the budget figures for fiscal year nineteen twenty, we have, um, we have good reserves for rainy days. You know, we don't want to spend it all on just one rainy day. I, I think this is gonna be a roller coaster year, twenty twenty-one, and, and possibly beyond that. But I'm happy to, what I wanted to do, I didn't know if any of you knew, um, what all those pages mean, just in general, or if you're even interested. Rodney, Wendy, you're, you're, you're simple.
I can add some, uh, brief overview of it, um.
Yes, yeah. I'm gonna go through, like, what you'll see is you have to cover the first page. And then the second page is district contact. I started incorporating this into the budget a couple of years ago. I don't think anybody down there ever uses it. Because every other form I never do, I still have to put, put in all the information, but it was a great idea. Page one, where it says across the top, maintenance and operations M and O fund. That is basically our business fund, our general funding for the majority of our salaries, our benefits, um, employee, employer paid benefits, um, like health insurance, like the, um, and ASRS matches. It's also our school supplies, our utilities. It is our budget for all of our consumable items. And it is, as we look at fiscal year twenty twenty-one currently, the budget amount is three million six hundred and thirty-five thousand nine, five hundred and ninety-two dollars. So then if you go to the next page, page two, there's just some detail on the page. Primarily what department of it uses it for, the, the primary number that they use. Up in the left-hand side, it's the program, um, special education programs by type, M and O programs, two hundred and three hundred. And we'll look at the detail of how much we're spending on special ed students, especially what it's testing. To make sure that we maintain our, we, we keep our maintenance of effort. I.e., you have to keep up your local expenditure before you use your grant to supplement. Page three is our Prop two oh one funding, so that's our budget for, for those different, um, base salaries, for the performance pay, and then also for the other classroom fund thirteen. All of these funds are cash controlled, so while we have a budget, uh, cash collections may very well lag behind or, or maybe more plentiful. We will see this result here. Since it's sales tax, I would suspect it will last a long. Um, page four is just the detail of our Fund six ten, which is our unrestricted capital. We primarily use that for, um, textbooks, instructional aids, computer equipment, lease agreements, licenses, um, that type of thing. But also use these monies if we had construction projects we needed to accomplish, accomplish, which are more than, um, team maintenance, but things that the SFE would not fund for us, if we had to use our dollars for that. Dr. Dooley's done a great, great job getting, uh, resources for the SFE for our schools and our, our whole building. The next page is just some additional detail, page five, that has to be. I've never had anybody ask anything about it, other than it has to match. Page six contains our grant funds and our grant fund budget, both from the federal grant and our state grants. And then has all of our miscellaneous funds that we have in the district. We have, we probably have a good, um, eighty funds that are current that we actually use. All of them have very specific uses, other than a oh one with the salaries, benefits, utilities, supplies, consumable type things, and capital. So they're all very specific to how, there's a lot of different pools that we have in the system. And then page seven is the capital expense for our M and O, our, our federal budget limit. And page eight, and I don't know if you have those pages.
Yes, we do.
You? Okay.
Yeah.
And then, and then there's a supplement, which we don't have any of that funding. There's a summary on it, a summary page two, that's actually what we, um, attaches to our meeting notice that we post for Department of Education. There's a truant taxation, uh, form. We don't have any of those type of items, so it doesn't apply to us. And then I don't know if you have this or not, there's actually a data entry form.
Yes, we do.
And, and I can put all the different data, basically our student count, our ATM. Um, there's also additional detail, like our K three count, which is the ATM, our different special that I've had on, which at that, at this point, I, I used exactly last year. I don't have anything better to know what we're gonna look like if we progress in the year. Again, that's gonna be final funding based on actual ATM for twenty twenty-one.
And for the, for members who have books, the one-page or two-page regular fine summary, that's in your, that's eight, three or four, and you're sitting side on screen. I'm sure, I mean, it's not in a long piece that you have to read.
But, but, then in a nutshell, just kind of an overview of the budget. Most of it, now remember too, it's just a plan as we look at this coming year. And we'll put it around within categories as we need to. For example, um, later in the presentation, um, Dr. Dooley and Mr. Edlin will present a lot of, of, of techniques for, um, online instruction. We know that that's gonna come probably with additional professional development costs for our teachers to make sure that they are prepared and ready to help kids. So we'll move that budget, the bottom line's firm depending upon our ATM, but then we move it around as we need to for the year. Thank you. You're very welcome. And I'm always happy to answer any questions. I find it fascinating, but I do understand our. Can I answer any questions, Dr. Dooley?
Uh, yes, of mine, thank you.
Are we all right?
As long as we have money in the bank, on next June thirty, I'll be happy.
Well, we'll have money in the bank. We might not have a ton, but no, we will be fine. You know, we, as a district, we're careful before I got here, we're careful with our money. And, and that's good because rainy days always come, and you don't have, we don't have as a district. We don't have overrides or bonding like a lot of other districts do, those additional resources. So we have been very, very careful and we will continue to do that, understanding that this is going to be a year that we're gonna have to really probably put some resources in front of, in our, in our schools and in front of our students. That's to come later. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you. So. I have to, I have to go to another meeting for a little bit, but I will be back. So I'm gonna leave, but I'll come back.
Thanks, Leanne.
Thank you. See you later.
Bye.
So we wait till six o'clock.
I put estimate on site, so we can.
Oh, all right.
May, um, may I have a little example of the, um, meeting, please, this meeting?
So, move.
And I seconded. Hey, Laura, how are you?
No, you just had to return.
Uh, well, yeah, we just did.
Yeah, and then we started this meeting.
And we just did. I don't know. All right. Call the meeting, our second meeting to order, and if we may have a roll call, please.
Ms. Duncan?
Here.
Mr. Hopkins here. Ms. Robertson?
Here.
Mr. Hill? Dr. Dooley?
Here.
Mr. Edlin?
Here.
Ms. Burns not here?
That's it. All right, um, we're gonna change the agenda just a little bit. And, um, and I'm sure you all know it's been a sad week for the Alco community. Rose Cameron passed away in June twenty-nine. And then one with brain, that's a hot seat right there. Both Rose and Lisa served many years on the, with the Alco, like, group. I had the opportunity to work with them for ten years. And through those years, I learned, they both held the education and lives of the Alco kids as number one importance for board members. They also believed this could be best accomplished by the board and administration working on the team. It was a time of change, and we seemed to include Grant. And because of that, we hired Ryan McKenzie, Mercy Aaronson, Casey, Ryan Harrowell, and had strong creative faculty for many parts of the world. Rose and Lisa were very involved in making this happen. The greatest memorial we could make in their honor is to continue their ideals and their hopes of making Alco communities grow, one of the best rural schools in the state. They will be missed. Will you please stand here now and remember their accomplishments for a new encompassment? Thank you. Would you all stay standing and also look away? I plan to make them to fly on the United States and two republics, and which stands one nation, and the God. With liberty and justice for all. Uh, I agree with that. All right, now you may sit. And I can rehear a motion to adopt the agenda.
So, move.
I'll second it.
Mr. Hopkins, aye. Ms. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Hill?
Aye.
And Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
It passes four to one.
All right. Are there any visiting comments? Okay. Um, is anyone on the governing board that have a report to make? I have the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Duncan. Um. I echo, uh, some of the, all the things that Mrs. Duncan said about our few board members. Um, Mr. Robertson served in the board twenty years. Um, he was always an admin, his kids, and so he had good and bad. Uh, Mrs. Cam, we can't get her as a student, she's a student, a teacher, and board member in our district. And as I say, um, in my opinion, uh, this is their place, learning those two ways, pass through. I learned from both of them, and I had discussions with both of them, enjoyed their grad, the secret kids first, and, uh, the UCM. Uh, to report this time of year, there aren't as many things, individual items going on as I reported on in the past, as there are business. Um, they take a lot of time. And one of the things that we've been regaling in our experience is that we combine, we've done this for twenty years. And typically, we hire people like us because we have answers or ideas. Uh, this, uh, growing virus for COVID nineteen is creating a situation that I irreverently say is kind of like preparing airplane flight. Um, we have some frustrations because we have a hard time finding, um, a steady stream of information that we can rely on. We hear different things from the state, from counties, from the federal government, but he then may. And important thing you'll look at tonight is the government community are planning to reopen for twenty twenty-one school year, for example. Um, staffing is always a challenge this time of year, this year, that's been exacerbated. The federal government has outlawed day one visas or H one Bs until the end of December. So, so the, the math teacher that we hired a month ago until October, she couldn't come in if she wanted to. And so, uh, Mr. Edlin has, uh, worked to cover the high school math. And the people are gonna be covering that math, and so if something changes, we find that teacher will be Mercy Aaronson and Casey, um, and about that. We still have a situation, we have a new situation this week with five, six teachers. We hired this teacher and leave at the May board meeting. We, I got a letter of resignation from her today, uh, stating she's in another state, she must have worked in Washington state. And I thought I had some leverage with the J one, and I don't think I do, so we could have started. And Angelina has tried to teach me, has never stayed, was fully staffed in the summer. Because we always have something like this, and that does not make it less frustrating, but we've got to work on that. Um, I'd love to, Mr. Edlin, uh, you've all met him, obviously, or he wouldn't be here. Uh, this is an official first board meeting, as the principal of the Alco school, we and I spent a lot of time together. And I keep thinking that I'm talking about my family growing up, that my older brother is named Larry, so I keep thinking Larry and Robert. Uh, so we're back again, it's, it's, it's the main theme. Um, construction is ongoing, pardon me, is ongoing on the gym Asian building. Excuse me. Uh, that's a seven hundred, uh, seven hundred thousand dollar project that we're able to get from the state. It's not costing us anything except our time. Um, not only are we getting new roofs, but we're getting new conduit for wiring, we're getting new stoppers for water, we're sending water off the flat roofs, uh, we're getting, uh, new, uh, metal edging around all the buildings, so hopefully it'll last for a while. The roof, not just barrel roof in the gym itself, the flat roof, are guaranteed for twenty years. I love my job, but the next time you need new roof, you're gonna have to depend on someone else to find it, man, because I doubt I'll be around, uh, for that event. But it's looking pretty good, and really, we've had, this is the third big construction project in three summers. It's the first one, it's come close to finishing on time, and I've really been impressed with the skill set of the leadership and the team they have out there. It's not perfect, but they're doing, they're doing a very good job of progressive roofing out of Phoenix. Um, we have, um, I mentioned, uh, J one's being frozen. Uh, this is kind of a tragedy, uh, that we rely on a lot of international teachers, which I think the school has benefited. And the, the, the rationale for shutting down J one is to not take jobs away from US citizens, which I can appreciate. But whoever made that decision hasn't been an administrator in Arizona. It's not just rural schools like us are looking, having a challenging time, like teaching conditions, it's the big city schools as well. And, uh, Ron is an example of taking anywhere to teach. Uh, we've been lucky to have some sterling teachers from Philippines and Jamaica, and I'm looking forward to thinking he'll do that again to help our kids, so I can improve on our board.
Thank you. All right, the next daughter of business is, um, is a personal, uh, issue, and it's the insurance, so it's certified contract for twenty twenty, twenty eleven, for that, that charity.
Does that tell your father because of the J one part?
No, she's over here.
Oh, well, okay.
I want to say.
Because that's the thing, we'll always use your brother.
May I have a motion to accept the consent of the agenda, please?
Hmm.
One second.
Yes.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Hopkins on, Mr. Hill?
Laura?
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
It passes four to one.
All right, now we can go to the, to the, you know. Due to COVID nineteen travel restrictions imposed by handful of companies, the state department is extending five-year day one working visas for the sixth year. The administration has been aware of the approval of the six-year extension, and that has been or will constantly be approved. for, uh, Dash and Edison as a middle school social teacher. Um, may I hear a motion that we issued for our contract for the year two thousand twenty twenty one?
Don't move.
Thank you.
I'll second this.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Duncan?
Aye.
Ms. Edlin?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson's on, um, for you.
All right, the next daughter of business is one that's very important. Is the curriculum instruction and approval of the twenty 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 one school operational plan protocol. I know Dr. Dooley and Mr. Edlin have developed these operational plans for the school here. Uh, this plan includes the first classroom instruction for students, online instruction for students, and the division of the student body into two groups to enable our school to appropriately socially distance the students. And I would like to comment on how many hours you put on, and I have a good witness.
Oh, thank you. Um, there are going to be a, I hope there are questions. We cannot probably anticipate the things that are going through the, um, teachers' minds and the board members' minds about this. Again, this is something new for all of us. Um, the, the formats of what we're using, the, the template has been produced by the Arizona School Risk Retention Trust. That's our liability insurance provider, it's called the trust. Um, we have, uh, spent a lot of time working on it. Um, Mr. Edlin has done the lion's share of this. He and I have met several times to talk about this and, uh, prepare something for you to look at. Um, in the budget, uh, well, the CARES Act, I'll mention the CARES Act. The US CARES Act is helping us. Things that we plan on doing to help keep kids safe, and that's the whole purpose. You gotta keep kids and staff safe. Uh, I'm concerned about, I reported yesterday from the Secretary of Education, uh, Betsy DeVos saying, "Schools need to open in a regular fashion." That's not gonna, that's not keeping kids six feet apart and keeping them safe. Um, Mrs. Cote's kids, I'll pick on you a lot, Ronan, because you're sitting here. Her four and five-year-olds, if there are eighteen children in that room, there's no way they're gonna be six feet apart, partially because of the geog- geography of the room, and the other part is because of the geography of the kids. They're not built that way, they like to socialize. They, they wanna hug, they wanna be together. So, uh, Mr. Edlin and I worked out a schedule that we think will meet families' needs, keep kids safe, uh, keep kids at distance, give kids, parents an option of having the child in school, uh, on a split schedule, or having them here, uh, uh, pardon me, having them home on a, uh, an online program. We are going to, uh, we, we are using CARES money to finance some of this. We have already spent a significant amount of money purchasing masks, for example. And this, this type of thing you see when you go to the clinic or a doctor's office, people wear, uh, inexpensive paper masks. When we try to take a look at, we did the math, it's two masks per day for our student body, uh, for the length of the semester, twenty-two thousand dollars. So we, we ordered them, we have, we've ordered, um, hand sanitizer. We ordered it in March, we finally got it about two weeks ago. We, uh, have, have received, ordered and received thermometers. We are going to do things to try to keep kids that aren't healthy not to come on the school buses. For example, especially Lukeville students that are forty miles away. I spoke to the county school superintendent today about this, and said, "We wanna take the temperature." If a child has passed a hundred point four, they don't get on the bus because it's harder for parents to come and get them. When children come to school, they're gonna have the temperature taken before they walk in the first period class. Probably again after lunch. Uh, we're talking about sanitizing desks, not just the studio staff, but where, where our students are changing periods. Every hour, every two hours, we want to have the classes, um, a spray bottle of soap, according to the county health department, suffices, and then wipe it down with a paper towel, uh, to keep that clean. With a self-contained classroom, such as a, a pre-K through six, or pre-K through five, we don't have to have every period do it, we can do it a couple times a day, we believe. We can't have, uh, we can't have recesses. The state law says you will have a certain amount of play period. Can't do it with COVID, they're saying not gonna do it. So we've talked about things, we haven't come to, to a closure on this or conclusion because we had to get the report done. So this is kind of the trivia, the parents may talk to you about it, man, it's not trivial. It's not what the state asked us to report. But we'd like to have, for example, teacher X has twelve students in their class, and their anxieties can be, it's because they're not being active. We wanna think, take them out of the football field, walk on track, do some exercises, do something, but not playing soccer in the, in the grass in front of us, or not playing some contacts where we're, they're going to be all over each other. We're looking at, um, funding edgenuity. We've used edgenuity in the district for over a decade. It's an online educational program, we use it in grade six through twelve. Um, in lieu of school suspension, we use that for, um, having students that need some help keeping up, or who have missed some days, or who are taking a class that we can't offer, or who wanna remake, retake the class. And, uh, that's worked out well for some of our kids. Some of our kids have graduated yearly because of that. But we're gonna expand that to K, to kindergarten through, through fifth grade, so it'll be K twelve. So when teachers are looking at online instruction, which is a combination of what we're gonna propose, they have, um, to, have an option. They don't have to create the wheel all over again. And it's, it's, we think it's reasonably rigorous. Uh, we also think students are going to have something viable, that's tied to state standards. And it's something that, that teachers and the parents can work with the child, we think, more effectively. Last thing I want to talk about as far as purchases. Uh, Mr. Schultz, our IT person, and, uh, Mr. Edlin and I spent some time yesterday with, uh, Leanne on the budget for the CARES money. We have two CARES Acts. There's this Arizona, uh, CARES Act, which if we get this, if this report is approved by the board, we register with the State Department. That helps open the door for us to apply for, for, uh, Arizona CARES. But we have to have, uh, a couple other things we gotta work out. With the federal money, um, we have, we have looking at purchasing hotspots and Chromebooks, uh, for kids, because we, we think that conservatively, thirty percent of our students do not have internet at home. And it's sad that, for me, that typically, young people don't have internet at home because of the cost. And we need to have equal education for our kids. In the spring quarter, we used, uh, a lot of packets. Well, we've been doing that in education for seventy years. And it depends on the quality of the packet, whether the child got some good work done or not. But we think if we can do the hotspots and Chromebooks, that we have more of a universal way of providing services to kids. So that's a big, that's a, a big question. So those are some, we're gonna expect kids to wear masks in school. Um, everything I read says if you're closer than six feet for more than fifteen minutes, you're, you're putting yourself in danger for exposure. Uh, the state, the county board of supervisors, which I support, passed a, a resolution saying anybody over five years of age should wear a mask if they're, uh, more than six, closer than six feet to their people. You notice I took mine off, so you hear me, 'cause I'm seven feet away from Mr. Edlin and Ms. Duncan. Um, but we're gonna, we're gonna, uh, expect those kind of behaviors. When we have, we've talked about, uh, teacher orientation week, when they come back, uh, on the, on the tenth of, oh, I'm sorry, on the third of, uh, August, uh, or, uh, the seventh, um, that we need to have that in the auditorium, because that's the only place we can have an entire staff gathering and have six feet away from people. So we're taking this pretty seriously. I'd like to defer to Mr. Edlin to go over more of the details about this report, and perhaps answer questions or, or give you information that you may have questioned before when you thought about this. And this may change. Just like when the governor came out last weekend, we had planned, uh, a program that would start on August tenth. But he said, "No, we're not gonna have any face-to-face instruction until the seventeenth." So that made us rethink some of the things we were gonna propose to you folks. So that could change. Arizona has had something like seventeen hundred cases each day for the last two days. According to New York Times yesterday or today, we're the highest political entity in the world, as far as spike right now. So I don't see the governor shutting us down like he did last year because of the economics involved. But with that type of, uh, risk, something drastic may happen. And again, we gotta keep kids and staff safe, so. I would defer to Mr. Edlin, uh, to talk more about the specifics of our plan.
Thank you, Superintendent Duncan. President Duncan, members of the board. Um, I'd just like to say that this is one of those things that we've been cautioned that we could be in and out of school, off and on all year, um, this year. I was reading, uh, an article last night that hospitals in Phoenix are, uh, very near capacity and are at the critical care phase where they're going to have to start determining who they can help and who they can't treat at this point in time. Um, which is going to make it very difficult for anyone to assume that we can get back in school in person on the seventeenth of August. Um, however, uh, we need to be prepared, one way or the other. And that's part of the reasoning behind the plan that, that we have presented to you is that we had originally stated we would come back in on the twenty-fourth for face-to-face. We may wanna change that wording to say when we are authorized, within one week after being authorized, to return to, uh, face-to-face, uh, instruction, that we would assume resume the A V schedule. Because we're going to be in that phase for quite some time until they eliminate social distancing requirements, or make it to where, uh, they adapt it towards an achievable uh, phase for us to be able to go to a more rigorous five-days-per-week or something like that in person. Um, we also put together the, uh, option for families to have hundred percent distance learning, um, because there are some families, um, that are concerned about uh, transmission of the virus to either their children who have weakened immune systems or vulnerable immune systems, or there are vulnerable situations at home for family members and loved ones that are, are part of that. Um, so we put a great deal of thought into this, I'm, I'm sure you're aware. I expect that you have questions, we, we welcome those because obviously you can't think of everything when you're going through it for the very first time, but, um, I welcome your questions, and I'd just like, even though Dr. Dooley and I did put an amazing amount of time into this, and, uh, tried to follow the guidelines of the CDC and the trust organization uh, to the best of our abilities, and, uh, to meet the requirements of the governor as well, so.
Good question, is it just, is it not practical to check every student's temperature when they get on the bus? Probably the least ones in reach for that?
Oh, we, yeah, I think we, that, yes. Because I'm, I'm, I'm.
I kinda thought, I was like, yeah, somebody gets on the, how long is it off?
Well, they were gonna start that.
Pass them till they get here, or are we just exposed?
I agree.
That's great. Our, our biggest concern with Lukeville was they get here and it's if getting someone to come pick them up is a, a real challenge. From, from what I've heard from gathering information from staff, if someone is, is ill, uh, getting someone to come pick them up is a real challenge, so.
Some students will get tested twice in the morning, they're probably gonna be tired, but I've had it done to me, doesn't hurt. Just, it's, it's like, we got these little guns, you know, you don't wanna use that word, thermometers, you're about five, six inches from the first person's forehead, you can pick it up. And so what we're gonna expect is teachers to do that, uh, first period, maybe after lunch again too, so. Uh, and we gotta doc, we haven't come away, but we need to document that in case certain, a certain person. I think one of the things that we've really gotta keep in mind is I'm not hearing that from our staff too, my gentleman, Mrs. Cote has heard. But some, there's some superintendents are talking about, uh, one Tucson district I was talking to last week, they have fifteen percent of their staff saying, "We don't wanna come back to work."
Right.
They wanna, they wanna be in the business, but they're scared. And so it's imperative that we, kids first, but we also gotta keep the adults, because without those adults, we don't even, we don't have an education for the kids. So we gotta keep them safe too.
I was wondering about that too, just because of, you know, we, we probably do have, you know, some study on staff who have a higher risk of COVID. I wonder how that would work if they, with their own safety, said, "I can't come in," but essentially going to have to keep them up their leave days and sick days until they're gone, and then.
They're es, they're estimating, I'm sorry, I didn't mean. They're estimating somewhere between twenty and twenty-five percent of teachers nationally are, uh, unsure whether or not they're gonna be here in the classroom this year, at this stage of the summer.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So.
The Fennell County attorney came out with a report today, uh, on COVID leave, basically free leave compared to sick leave. Basically, what they're saying is, uh, COVID, we can, we can give an employee two weeks' leave without docking salary or taking away sick leave, uh, and based on COVID, um, isolation, late isolation. Um, after that, comes off their sick leave. Uh, now, if we have a person who has, if it's a, if it's a, most, most vacation is accrued by a classified, twelve-month classified employees, or Mr. Edlin and I, that's it. I'm kidding everybody else. It's unfortunate, teachers don't have, uh, vacation, 'cause they work on only ten months a year. So if I was in that position, instead of a pay doc, I'd take vacation if I had to, uh, isolate, self-isolate for, for two weeks. That's some things we gotta. And some of those things we're gonna look at, and we're gonna call the county health. I spent a half hour on the phone with lady from the county health last week. For example, I was talking about the cost of Clorox wipes every day, every day. And they're hideous. And she said, "Use a spray bottle with soapy water, that'll be enough." And I said, "That meets your, your requi-" yes. She said, "Call me with any questions you have." Pardon, they're very helpful, so I will put them on speed dial.
I was, uh, with Martin, he was a, a doctor, and she, they were discussing opening school. Um, and they said that, uh, she's, this lady, she said that as far as she was concerned for, uh, kindergarten, preschool, and maybe first and second, that masks were more dangerous for them than having an air. But I had not heard, and they didn't get into it too much.
I need to.
It, but the little ones, I guess they get adopted and you can't save them. I, I'm just, I'm just guessing.
One of the things that, uh, Mr. Edlin has ordered for himself, and, and Mrs. Conley has picked up some of the shields, they almost look like construction shields or others masks.
Yeah.
And personally, I like those, 'cause they're not as warm as each. And, uh, I think you can hear the voice easier, so that's something we're gonna look at, see if we can buy some of those as well, so we might have. And with little guys, we're gonna have, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know even if they make them.
I don't hear, but we definitely.
But I thought it was interesting, I would, I'll do more with that.
Plus, it just gives you that opportunity, with the clear face mask or face shield, gives you an opportunity to build more rapport, when they can see your expression and your friendly face, to, you know, to welcome them and make them feel.
I think the younger ones would love it.
Exactly.
That's a good point. We'll definitely look into taking that into.
Another question about, do you know how policy won't let students? Because I know they, they now make a lot of those face shields to attach correctly to the rest of the physical. I don't know. But that would be, it'd be easier way to get students to.
That'd be something that would be, that would be acceptable.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We have, we have expectation, kids over half their age in the classroom. This, this is an example, we, we get to change things as, as time goes by, I guess.
So, if you got a staff member who needed to stay home for their own safety, because they're a teacher, they need to stay home for their own safety consideration, but there's not a way that a person could work remotely with, you know, like students, but, um, in that way, they're still considering, you know, patients, but it's also not, you know, certainly do all of the, the.
We, if we had, if we had a staff member, if we do medically need to stay home, we would take that in serious consideration.
Absolutely.
Right now, we want, like, we want, we have, uh, jumpstart starting today, Monday. Monday, Monday, thank you. We want people here because we know what's happening, and we feel that way, we, we think. One of the things, um, I was talking with a therapist out of town the other day. And, uh, this person we're talking about, I said, "So you're staying busy?" He said, "Very." We talked about the fact, the impact on adults as well as kids of the lockdown, of the shutdown. And it's, uh, we're seeing higher, hopefully in case of adults, higher use of alcohol. And it's, we're seeing higher, hopefully in case of adults, higher use of the law. There's more domestic violence, there's more child abuse, there's just stress in families. Because we all love our kids dearly, but sometimes it's nice to have them outside playing around or in school for a few hours. And that's not been the case since the thirteenth of March in a lot of families. So it's created, it creates discussion situations.
Doctor Lee, or Mr. Edlin, can you speak a little bit about that, about, you know, the more we found that kids may drop off the radar and just kind of, you can have, especially either families that choose fully online schooling or if they have to do that under COVID conditions?
Sure.
Yeah, Ms. Erica, how you're thinking about just keeping track of the kids, make sure everyone's.
Sure.
Well, most students will be a part of the regular classroom roster for teachers, so they'll be on their regular class rosters. However, teachers will need to check on student progress on a daily basis to make sure kids are staying on track, on pace and participating and doing things they're supposed to. If not, they'll need to contact that family and follow up with them. Also, Wednesdays currently in the A D schedule are set up specifically for students who need additional tutoring or who are struggling or falling behind, or for students who are a hundred percent remote distance learners, for teachers to touch base with them individually on at least a one-to-one basis. Teachers are required to contact those hundred percent distance learners at least once per week. That's a state requirement. So that would, that would continue to hold those students accountable as well, as well as make sure the teachers are stay connected with those kids, because we would eventually like to have them back on campus at some point in time.
One of the things, good question, Mr. Robertson, I think one of the things, I'm always worried about money, or the lack of it. And I think that we are fortunate that right now the state is, and it makes me nervous because LeAnn's back on screen, so I could make a mistake and she'd have a bunch of shots. But I think it's still gonna be critically important to accrue funds by having the right A D M. That means kids have to register. So Mr. Edlin and I have talked about it, instead of expecting four hundred kids, parents to come in and register them in the office as the law requires every year, the school office is gonna send out some form of registration form and we're gonna ask for some other information as well. The staff, the secretaries of the school office have called to check on availability of Wi-Fi in homes, for example. But roughly a third of our students telephone, there's no answer, or the phones have been disconnected. So we need to be on top of that better to find out, to help parents, help us stay current on contact information. Because if one of those hundred and fifty kids that we can't get ahold of parents today, or yesterday, or last week, if they had an accident in school, it could be, it could be really bad news for getting parent permission to, for medical treatment. And we gotta, we gotta work on that better, I think. I worry about the question you have, Mr. Robertson, with kids that just fade into woodwork and parents call homeschooling. Technically, if you're gonna homeschool, you need to be registered with the Keman County School Superintendent's Office. And I doubt if that's happening in some cases, so if we don't have a way to monitor their safety or their progress. You've all heard me say in an article I read last April, in the L.A. system, a hundred thousand kids didn't turn one page during the spring shutdown in Miami, date Miami County, eighty thousand kids. And I worry that we're gonna have a negative impact on the progress of these kids when the dust settles with COVID- nineteen and we find out we have students that have been successful in quotation march, but they haven't learned what we expect them to learn by state standards.
Are there any more questions?
Yeah, I do. So in, in previous years, staff or teachers have been responsible for supplying some basic supplies like tissues and paper towels. Will that change with COVID?
That's never been a requirement. Anytime they ask, we have basic supply list, we, if they want to go above and beyond that, then they need to do that. But I don't expect teachers to buy face masks, if that's, or soap, or spray bottles. We provide paper towels, we got about eight or ten cases for the preschool last week, for example. We already have hand sanitizer. What we expect teachers to do is, we don't want kids to administrate, number one, it could become a squirt gun. Number two, it would go way too fast, but we'd like to have teachers, and again, it'll take some instructional time, but we're gonna finance it, we already have, we have the products here for the most part. What we've been told initially, I thought that gloves were a good idea, but the more we read, the less we think that way because the gloves only protect the first person. So if I shake hands with Mr. Edlin and I'm wearing gloves, it protects me. But if I shake hands with Ms. Duncan or Mr. Hopkins, I'm spreading the germ, it could, it's just like your own flesh. So there's not really a benefit to gloves, plus they're very expensive, but there's not the benefits, so people aren't recommending that. But the answer, the short answer, Mr. Robertson, is no. I'm sorry.
Even my dad says they do not wear gloves.
Okay, good, good.
So, and it spreads the germ more.
Yeah.
You have your glove on, you touch something, you touch something else, and it's just sticking on the glove where you can't be downed by your hand.
Good point, good point.
At times, you can be exposed.
I think we need, I think we need to talk to, talk to staff and medical people. When we worked on this plan, we had a committee, we had some parents, teachers, we had two people from the medical field. Here, we met with about, I think we had eight people, eight or ten people in that committee. And they suggested things that, because based on the medical field, that we hadn't thought about, but we have to maintain that.
Okay, so I understand correctly, tissues and paper towels will be supplied to the classrooms?
Yes.
Okay, great. Another question, just in terms of whether we reopen for in-person schooling at all? Will you be following the CDC recommendations or the A D E roadmap to determine whether we will have, if, you know, in-person classes or not?
Yes.
That's the one thing we can't do.
That's what we have to do really, is we have to follow the guidelines of the CDC and the governor's executive orders as he puts those forward as well. We have to make sure that we're staying in compliance with what we're directed to do by our, by our state governor and then also following the guidelines of the CDC as far as social distancing and sanitation requirements, disinfecting requirements, things like that. So yes, we would follow those guidelines.
Agreed.
I think, I think that's, that's our protection as a district legally. I think, I wanna think that most decisions are being made, definitely the CDC, is for the health of people in our country. Now, if the governor said September first, we have told shutdown like he said in March, it would change a lot of what we did here. So we had to comply, we're, we're an agency of the state, so we had to comply with the N A came from the government. My best understanding is what the Secretary of Education said yesterday, they're urging the governors to do certain things. And I, I don't see Arizona doing what she's asking, is having a total opening of school, because it's just impossible. Unless we had teachers here twelve, thirteen hours a day and have a split session, there's no way we can keep the social distances. So I think, I'm hoping that the governor maintains the allowing us to have, like, the A D schedule that we're planning.
And we're seeing, we're seeing between twenty and twenty-seven percent positive test rates, results every day right now. I mean, today was again thirty-six hundred cases out of fifteen thousand tests. We had thirty-six hundred positive cases out of fifteen thousand tests. So, I mean, it's very difficult to, anything above eight percent as a positive result is a very scary number according to what the CDC is saying, and we haven't seen a number that low in a long time.
Yeah, yeah, I think, um, my, my concern is that our, our governor has been a little behind the game with a lot of the requirements, and I've looked at it all, Arizona is doing horribly. And I, I guess I, I, I hope that we're able to think for ourselves, because CDC guidelines, they're just guidelines.
Right.
And it makes sense that they protect us in terms of, legally, it makes sense for us to follow them. But I don't think we can rely on, on just simply following the governor's mandate.
It's interesting, you make a good point, Wendy. They, when we started to have this conversation probably six weeks ago, as the calendar year nineteen twenty wound down, you know, it was, we were shutting, and I was surprised when, thirteen twenty, about the twenty-fifth of March, something like that, the governor said, we're shutting down the rest of the school year. I never thought he would take that hard to stand. But yeah, and shortly after that, we started planning for the new year, things were saying like, well, it's local control, it's up to the local board and superintendent. And in fact, there's a couple, there's a couple of things to think about that, in my opinion. It could be that they want to share, share the political heat, or they appropriately don't know what Ojo needs compared to what Osborne District needs in the middle of Phoenix. I wanna think that, given the benefit of the doubt, but I think right now, if we said, you know, we're shutting down for the rest of the year, we might have some funding issues with the A D, I don't know.
I will say that there are districts that are going a hundred percent remote, is their only option that they're offering families right now. But, you know, I was looking last night, amphitheater came out and they shut down all extracurricular activities last night. They, they pulled the plug on, not last night. But there, there are a number of things, and I think a lot's going to depend on the results that we see and outcomes that we're seeing from tests over the next two to three weeks. And, you know, we watch the numbers daily, we watch the numbers daily just for Ojo, we watch the numbers on a daily basis. And it's climbing steadily, almost on a daily basis. So those are, those are all things that are taken into consideration, I agree with you a hundred percent. I, I would like to see the governor come out with a solid stance that some of those things are not in our control, unfortunately, so.
Well, we run for governor though, Wendy, we expect you to support us.
That's right.
We're gonna be the dynamic duo. Do you have a question, Mr. Edlin?
Yeah, one suggestion I would make to read the section about face covering is making sure that our students and all of our teachers and staff know about the Ojo Community Care Network, which is a Facebook group that has been giving free, free masks all over the town and onto the rest. I know there's one woman who's a member who every night makes ten new masks and puts them in a basket five or eight and just told everybody, come by and get them. Emily Saunders, one of the key people in that. So I went to her with the need for the learning center and she gave me a bag with ten custom-made cloth masks and it for students to wear. Just to make sure that they're aware of that network and that free group, not everybody touched face cover.
To have them on my calendar for next week to sit down in the meeting.
Okay, okay.
As well. Good.
A whole community care network?
Yeah.
Was someone else trying to say something?
No, go ahead.
Oh, okay. So one other thought, a bit along the line, what runs the thing, communication is in general, I mean, just trying to figure out what, what families have what technology, you know, you're having a hard time contacting some of the families. And I think it's gonna be really important for the, for the significant communications that we contact them multiple ways, mail, phone, Facebook, because every family has a different situation. And not for everything, I've seen, I've seen a lot of Facebook posts, not a lot, but more Facebook posts lately, which is helpful. But some families are only gonna get it by mail, so for the, for the communications that are, that are critical, I think that's important to come those out.
We will also be sending out some, some direct mail information next week. Registration, we're kicking off registration, or re-enrollment, I should say, tomorrow with our returning families through the food service and things like that, and we'll have posts on Facebook tomorrow. But a lot of, one of the issues that we've run into quite frequently, it sounds like, by talking to other people, is we're getting a lot of return mail for direct mail, so, I mean, we're trying to get updated addresses and things like that, but it is, that is one of the challenges that we're facing as well.
That's a big, that's a, I think a lot of the telephone.
It is an economics thing. I, for the first time in my life, I started looking at my phone bill, and I don't use the landline hardly at all. But I have to, I use it, I use the internet, and so that's probably three-quarters of my phone bill, my tabletop telephone bill. And I understand, appreciate, I have good service from my company. But for families, for families that have, like, I was talking to someone today who they're both, their son, their son and daughter-in-law were both working from home, and the kids are trying to do schoolwork from home. Well, they didn't have enough bandwidth, because both parents' careers involve video as well as audio and visual, and so that sucked up a lot of bandwidth, where the kids couldn't get on and do their lessons. Or if there's only one computer, only one computer in a home, that makes a challenge, we can't. You know, if it's a high school, a couple of high school kids, they're gonna be spending theoretically a significant amount of time doing homework, so that's one of the reasons. And, and I gotta give LeAnn credit, I try to save money, she did away with that yesterday, she thinks we gotta buy, and I pretty much tossed drawer Chromebooks, and if we can do it with CARES money, and we think we can, that's gonna be a big plus. That'll help out families, it won't help out bandwidth, but it'll help more than one student be online at the time.
We're gonna have the hotspots too.
Yes, right. Eric and I spent some time on that today, and then obviously we'll be talking more about that tomorrow a little bit as well.
And one last comment, it sounds like at least competitive sports are unlikely. You talked a little bit about recess in, in the way that we think of it not, not being okay anymore. I guess I would just like to think about what we can do. I know that, all right, there are challenges, but the kids got to get outside and run around and do stuff.
I agree.
Agreed.
I think, I think, Wendy, I was gonna make that comment, it reached my mind. This is something, no school superintendent wants to decide, say, football season's canceled, because there's this book called Friday Night Lights, and, but I don't see, I see more value, I've said this a hundred times, I'll say it again, more value of extracurricular activity sports in a small town like Ojo than Phoenix, because there's less opportunity for kids to do things. But there's no way we can have a football game, whether it's traditional tackle football or flag football, whether social distancing appropriate. And talking to people that know more about than I do, they're talking about golf and cross countries being like sports that high schools traditionally have, where you can have distancing. But we, LeAnn, being, Gal, Ronnie and I were talking today about, she was talking with the football coach, our new football coach, and she had heard that he was having practice. And so she called to clarify, because a parent called and was complaining, they didn't think their child, that they had to go to practice and their child didn't have choice. And so the person basically giggled and said, no, that's not the case, we're meeting at Walker Park. And I'm telling kids, come if you want to, but basically they're just doing conditioning things, they're doing a distance, they're not doing anything with pads, helmets, they're not doing any drills, they're running and doing exercises, basically. That's what I understood, so, and that's good, because you're right, kids need that physical movement, gets the blood running, gets the brain working. And it's, it's, we don't have a good. And it's, it's, we don't have a good answer for that, to be honest with you, but we gotta find a way. For example, if I was, if I and Leonard were teaching next door to one another, I may take his kids, what they say, "We're gonna see how fast we can walk three laps around the track." That's three-quarters of a mile. He might take them the next day and do jumping jacks or something like that. Now, he wouldn't want to do it on a day like today, but you could certainly do it at Halloween, because it's gonna be more appropriate out there. But I worry about doing much of that in gym with a large number of students, because it's an enclosed area near with news playing, even with the refrigeration system on, so.
Will the daddy take them to the gym then?
That's the plan.
At the, yeah, we still have a plan for Mr. Williams to, um, have PE with the kids, but we still have to make sure that we're maintaining social distancing requirements for that. So we, obviously you can't be passing balls back and forth to each other. You can't be throwing things to each other because of cross-contamination, like we were talking before. So we're gonna have to be very creative. It's gonna have to be a lot of stretching, a lot of quick movements where they can continue to build cardio, but not social interaction with each other, so to speak, where they're physically, uh, interactive with each other. But yes, the plan is still for Mr. Williams to still do his PE specials, um, with, with kids and still having those kind of activities.
They also have the bike program.
Right.
And that's, that's sponsored by the Dizamida in Dean County. I, I, I would help out with that. And in that program, the kids have their own bikes assigned to them, so they're not, they're not actually sharing bikes. So I imagine, I imagine that could be something that could, could, couldn't be profitable.
Yes, it could. That would definitely be a possibility. Um, I, I've also thought about like a walking club. It's too hot to run at this, at this time of year down here, but...
Poor my kids.
Yeah, I mean, we're just gonna have to be creative and, and think about, you know, the weather conditions and things like that, and make sure kids are properly hydrated if we're gonna do something like that.
Oh, comment on the community of this affected, wondering, are we, or is our custodial staff changing out air filters more regularly now?
We do when you're all here. Right now, we've got, got a significant number of staff. We've had, um, some turnover, um, with this. We've got people on vacation. But, yeah, we typically change the filter just before school starts. And that way, teachers can get to get clean air, because it also gives more life, life expectancy to the units, too.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure when, when things are going, if we have a system to trade those filters out quicker than we would have last year without probably, but I don't know if that becomes cost prohibitive as well.
I don't know that either. I don't know that. Maybe we'll try. Because I don't think those filters are expensive.
I don't think so either. You know, like, there's, uh, sort of a couple of weeks ago, upgraded from the HEPA filters. They're basically just said, okay, we're replacing all of our HEPA filters with one that was even higher rate of poor containment. But that's kind of more, given how much we have to use, they see the, the replacement is coming up regularly and fairly often.
That's one thing, yes, that they expect us to do, is routine maintenance. Before we start saying, "Hey, we need twenty new refrigeration," as they wanna know that we're doing reasonable, uh, proper, uh, preventive maintenance signs.
Other questions?
All right, then, can I hear a motion that we approve of the school proposed protocol for the operational plan for two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one school year?
So, Ruth?
I second.
Okay, so Mr. Hopkins approved. Mr. Hill?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Duncan?
Aye.
And passes. Well, you?
Thank you, thank you, folks. That's a big deal.
All right, the next is the approval of, um, the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one budget, which we have had discussion on already. Do I hear a motion that we approve, uh, the Aho by two thousand two month fiscal year budget?
I'll second.
Ms. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Hill?
Aye.
Ms. Hopkins, Ms. Robertson? Does anyone mind?
Aye.
Okay, go ahead, passes.
Thank you again.
Thank you again.
The next is disposal of the copy machines. Two copy machines, which the district acquired in July of two thousand fourteen, are being dispo, uh, disposed of and purchased two new issuance for the year twenty twenty, twenty, twenty-one school year. Each copy machine has an excess of one point six million copies. To dispose of the capital I S A Board, it must approve of the disposal. So do I hear a motion that we approve of the dispo, the disposal of the two biz-happy five hundred fifty-four E copy machines?
I'll move.
Let me try to...
I'll second. If you...
Okay, Mr. Hill?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Hopkins, Ms. Duncan?
Aye.
Passes. Or you?
And the next is, um, approval of the classified working condition agreement. The superintendent has worked with a committee consisting of Venus Galerani, Jose Jan, Robert Ogden, and Carmen O'Kaya, oh, Chorin, to review and revise the existing board-approved working condition agreement for the twenty twenty, twenty-one academic year. We had a chance to read it. Are there any questions? Ruth, do you have any questions about this?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Uh, I, I think we need to consider the significance of this proposal. This agreement, if it's ratified, it becomes official board policy for twenty twenty-one. And if it's ratified, it will stick along our existing five hundred page policy manual and become law in our district. I don't believe this agreement is organized enough. It's vague. It contradicts policy. It appears to violate Arizona, Arizona state laws. I don't think it's worthy of ratification as A U S D policy. December, when multiple teachers came forward with complaints stemming from the vague nature of their employee agreement, I pushed for the board to come together for a formal document review. Because my requests were ignored, we have been forced into a difficult situation of either approving a sloppy, vague, legally questionable document or scrambling to correct the most egregious problems so we can move forward with a workable agreement. In my, in doing anything to the latter would be irresponsible. It is the board's responsibility to reconcile the agreement with current board policy and Arizona law while preserving and clarifying the benefits our employees are entitled to and that they've worked so hard to advocate for. Therefore, I suggest this agenda item be tabled and that a formal document review be initiated as soon as possible in order for an acceptable working agreement to be ratified at a really awful time.
May I make a comment, Madam President?
Absolutely.
I met with four leaders of the classified committee. We use policy manuals to make our decisions. We're not saying anything we've written is perfect or flawless. I'm not aware of any Arizona v. statute fifteen, chapter fifteen that's in violation. We've used a lot of this handbook for probably a decade. We've never had a case go to any attorney and tell us that we had a violation of title fifteen. We have cited, uh, policy in here, every policy that can be equated. The, the board meeting that you're talking about was classified people, pardon me, I'm sorry, certified people. That was not classified. We try to align classified leave and vacation as closely as we can to statute with certified. We cannot like do that, because certified have rights, classified don't. But I would urge you to go ahead and approve this, because the classified teacher, classified employees have approved it, and they share with the employees in the department, and the classified people are happy with it.
I never went to the county.
Yes.
This document has a lot of the same issues that the certified document has, and I have asked many, many questions about it, so I, I, I would possibly feel comfortable approving it if my questions were answered, if they were not.
We haven't had time to answer every question we've gotten, Wendy.
I, I, I understand that, and I also understand a lot's going on, but this has been going on for six months. This document is not a good document.
I don't agree.
It has many problems that are causing problems for our employees.
No, no classified employee has come forward, anybody in leadership, administration, with any concerns about this, about this document, not one, to my knowledge. Now, they have come to board members, but if they had, they haven't addressed it to Mr. Edlin, Dr. Carrere, or me. Not since we adopted it.
Wendy, can you say specifically which parts of it you are having issues with?
Yeah, I, I think it's such a long conversation that it would be hard to, to come, we're all in them now. But one, one of the major problems is, is that Arizona law has a really strong sick leave law. Lot of protections and benefits to the employees, and that law is not well represented in this document. It's very confusing. It's scattered throughout the document, other things that it shouldn't apply to, like, personally. It seems not personally. I mean, that's just one of the problems. It's, it's so disorganized. It's, um, everything's missing from it. It references appendices that I've never seen, many. Uh, I, 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 it is horrible. It is a horrible document. It has good stuff, it has good stuff in it that the employees want, and we need to protect that. But I'm not willing to put my name on this policy. It, it becomes board policy. I mean, but I think it's okay, and I don't think it's okay.
It's not board policy. Board policy, if you take a look at school law, it's like an inverted triangle. It starts out with the U.S. Constitution, filters its way down to the state constitution. Board policy, the last thing on the pyramid is district-level handbooks. Board policy, state constitution always surpasses, uh, school handbooks, always. The, the appendices that you're mentioning, where in the handbooks that were passed out to you folks, were the teachers' last fall?
No, they were not.
I'm sorry, but you, I don't think you were, I don't know if you were at that meeting. I'm not sure.
I, I have the handbook from last year, or I have the agreement from last year to move the appendices, not all of them, but...
But they're in the book I have. Let's put it that way. They're in the handbook that I have, we pass other teachers, okay? So I understand your concern there, that they should have been with this, but we do have those appendices in those, because we've referenced them.
Okay, so, so...
And we've had them in there for probably five years.
Even if they, it, I, I do, I think of our, our policy manual, our, our district policy manual, as our constitution, and it is, it is a very extensive document, very well-written. We now have a policy, we have an agreement that's up there, that contradicts our policy many, many times. Then what do we do? Additionally, this agreement, it says, this agreement constitutes officially adopted board policy. It's set back in the agreement.
I, I, we have looked at board policy specifically with leave, because I know that was a question the board had. And we've aligned every leave area in any, in both, in this handbook and this working conditions with policy. You mentioned sick leave.
You missed, you missed something, because...
Well, that's the case. The committee did not choose to put that in there. This is a committee, an employee-created document as well.
And that doesn't have to be...
I understand, but for example, weekday, it's agreement. A nine-and-a-half-month employee is entitled to seven, eight days per year. Our district policy, nine-and-a-half days per year. In our district policy, also we have two policies that say different things.
I will repeat myself. We've never had one case where an employee has felt to have been treated wrongly or has brought a complaint to me or Mr. Edlin's predecessors and felt with classified employees and felt they have been dealt with properly. If we have an error in this, policy wins, always.
I, you know what, I, maybe it's a complaint or not, but the fact is... This is not an acceptable policy. It contradicts our, our U S, A U S D board policy. It has all kinds of stuff that's confusing about sick leave in it.
I know.
People don't understand their rights in terms of sick leave. It has so many problems. Like I said, the appendices that are missing.
Wendy, you're referring to this as policy, and it's not really policy. It's agreement with the teachers.
But the aspect is...
And it's a, policy and agreement are two different things in my mind.
I, I, I thought so, too, and, and, and like I said, if it, if it, if it sits below the policy, even that is a problem, because it contradicts the policy. But it actually says in the agreement...
I read.
It constitutes official adopt, officially adopted board policy, item number V twenty-four. It's, it's that, our, we are ratifying it as board policy, when we have plenty of policies that address most of this stuff thoroughly and clearly. There are some, there are some benefits in here that are, that are worth probably salvaging, trying to find a way to tack those on to policy. But a lot of it is repetitive of the team board policy, or it's contradicting it because it's team board policy.
Can we go on? Okay, uh, Brenda, we gotta continue, because it's, time is going.
Would you like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we accept the, uh, classified working conditions for two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one academic year.
When we not make a motion, it's already...
No. She wanted to know if we were gonna make a motion, and I did.
Well, I, I asked to make a motion. I said I'd like to make a motion.
Well, I guess we just didn't...
Do you want to make a motion, Madam President?
Tell me what you want.
I, I moved that this item be tabled in order to address the outstanding issues and, and the agreement represents...
Do I hear a second? And in being no second, we'll go back and have a motion that recommend the approval of the attached classified working conditions for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one academic year.
I'll make a motion to accept the agreement of the classified workers.
And I will, um, second it.
And Mr. Hill?
Aye.
Ms. Duncan?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson? Uh, Mr. Hopkins, aye. Hopkins, through and...
And the last thing is the approval of signers for the National Bank of Arizona accounts. Uh, when there's a change in leadership within the district, it becomes necessary for the board to appoint new signers.